All right, we will get this regular city council meeting in the city of International Falls started. It's 5:30 on Monday, June 20th. If you could join me in pledging allegiance to the flag.
I first read into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please note that all members of the council are present. Our first item is to approve the agenda with any deletions or additions. We have none, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve as written.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. We'll go to the approval of the minutes. The first, the minutes we have is from June 3rd, 2022, which was the special emergency city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion for those agenda, or that minutes.
Submove.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to the minutes of Monday, June 6th, 2022, a regular city council meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Submove.
Motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to our special city council meeting of June 13th, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion for that meet, or those minutes. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. And finally, we get down to the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting, which was also June 13th. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. That gets us to the payments of claims. We have a resolution before us for the transfers, payments, the claims, and accounts payable. International Falls transfers going to the 401 Permanent Improvement is $66,666.66. That's going from the 601 water in the amount of $33,333.33 and the equal amount out of the 603 sewer in $33,333.33. Going to the 403 capital reserve, or reserve for capital outlay, $25,760.42. And that's coming from the 601 water in $19,136.17. And the 603 sewer, $6,624.25. For a total transfers of $92,427.8. Our accounts payable, regular International Falls city claims of $225,094.5. Airport commission claims of $4,461.30. And International Falls Public Library claims of $14,781 even. For a total claims of $244,336.35. The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the payments and claims.
Submove.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Questions, concerns? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I will vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we go to audience. I already know we have some folks in the audience that are coming forward. Betsy, if you'd like to come forward. Ashawn, are you coming as well?
Yes.
Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting us come before you today. We come before you with the chamber. I was recently voted board chair, and Ashawn is kind of our main consultant with everything. She's actually going to chair the, she's a volunteer, well, we're all volunteers at this point. And Ashawn is actually going to be chairing the retail committee, so it's good for her to be here as well. So what we're here to talk about is crazy days, which we have scheduled for Wednesday, July 27th, which is our typical date. Last year, they did it in August, and that was because they thought the border was going to be open, so they were trying to capture the Canadian customers. But this year, we'd like to go back to when, the last Wednesday in July, which is when it's always been. And so what we'd like to do is get permission to block off that road, that first, between 3rd and 4th Avenue on 3rd Street, so that everybody can put their stuff out there and get some barricades, hopefully, and some picnic tables. That would be terrific.
Yes, they, last year, they had a couple picnic tables. They said that they could use a few more, so five to seven picnic tables right in that opening area. They plan on working with some concessionaires to have some food trucks out there, some activity going, perhaps some music, and make it more festive and welcome back our Canadian friends, of course. They're looking forward to it as much as we on the US side are looking forward to it. Some sense of getting back to normal.
So the request is for seven picnic tables and the road closure. What time do you need the-
There's also garbage cans that the city has placed around the area. And some of the businesses do open at 7:00 AM that morning.
Right.
It's kind of crazy. That's what they call crazy days. It's very early.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Right on.
So what time do you-
That's what we could think of right now that we need from the city. But we'll, we'll let you know if something comes to mind after we start meeting with some of our, we need to go and visit with them to see if there's anything that was last year that they think would be important to include this year.
And bring back, potentially.
Yeah, and bring back. But we've got the importance of getting the road closed, picnic tables, the garbage cans, those kinds of things.
I had one of the peanuts you just gave me. Now I'm copying.
I did that to him. I appreciate the peanuts in you.
You do. You put some water.
I'm gonna be fine. So, uh-
You get to gavel, huh?
Seven o'clock. So what time would you need the road closed if they're gonna start, because they'll obviously have to set up before 7:00?
Sure. Probably 6:30 should do it.
I think so.
6:30 till?
Probably till 5:00.
Mike's right.
You should go till 3:00.
I would consult Ted Brokaw. That's what they've done in the past three years or so.
Yeah.
I think it should be.
You know, maybe we should be closed until, maybe we should have them set up at 6:00 because they're gonna need time to get their stuff out there. So if we could do 6:00, then that would probably be better.
So what I'm hearing is the chair would be entertaining a glass of water. Please.
I think the main thing right now is to get the permit to close the road, correct?
Correct.
Right? Get that into the state so we can get that going through.
Yeah.
And I think the best thing you could do, once you find out what you actually need, would be to compile that list and then give it to Mike, and Mike can get that for you from the city and what time the closure is and everything else and details, and he can, he can take that for you.
Perfect.
So why don't we, why don't we go for, please?
And I don't know, you ladies weren't involved in the last couple of years, but the process is different for the road closure. The entity that has having the road closed has to provide the permit to the state. Ted has a map showing what each, each group all year long has, is requesting, so we'll need to get that map from Ted and Mike. And then I will forward you the application to the state, simple application, dates, times, what you're doing. I believe Crazy Days was on the list that we just sent down. The mayor sends down an annual list, and that's on there. But you do individually need to send that application down as well. That's why it was important you come in today, to do this now, to get that application to the state.
Okay.
So I will get you that information and make sure that Public Works gets you the appropriate map to attach with it.
Okay.
Do you have the application that she needs to fill out?
Yes.
Okay.
She'll probably send it to me in a minute. I can do that.
That is great. Thank you.
So at this time, I'm guessing that we should allow Crazy Days to be closed on July 20th, or the highway to be closed on July 27th from 6:00 until 5:00. They'll fill out the paperwork and authorize the Public Works Department to set up picnic tables and garbages. Chair would entertain a motion to move forward with that. We have a motion from Councilor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? I'm really glad that we're doing it.
We are too. Thank you so much. Would you, since we're here, would you like an impromptu update on the chamber?
Give me one second. Call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Maybe we could give an impromptu update on the chamber.
That would be great. Good idea, Mr. Mayor. As you all are probably aware, we did get the vote turned, or backward, back, so that we are still a chamber. And we're, right now, we have done our first billing. Pretty much, we're all volunteers at this point. We do have a chamber board of 12 people, and we have a couple people on a waiting list that would like to get on the chamber board as well. So that's really encouraging. And right now, we're just working in a rebuilding phase. And we hope to have a part-time director hired by about, well, July, August, somewhere in there. So that's kind of where we're at.
We expanded the board, I heard.
Yes. There were, there were so many people that expressed interest in serving on the Board of Directors. When we had our membership meeting April 26th, that the board, which was down to six members for a nine-member board, they had decided that it probably would be in the best interests of the chamber, since we have so many people willing to serve and so many people passionate about rebuilding the chamber, to expand it to 12. Years ago, it used to be a 12-member board. And so when people want to serve in that capacity, I don't think it's a good idea to turn them away. So we went ahead, and that was proposed to the membership. And the candidate names were proposed to the membership. They had an opportunity to add additional names, so there would be a ballot if there were additional names. There was no ballot, so that meant the membership really approved of who was being nominated. That slate of nominees was declared elected at last week's Board of Directors meeting. So the 12 board members had their very first board reading last week.
Should we try to tell them who the board members are real quick?
Yes.
Two past presidents, Callie and myself. Ashawn couldn't be on the board because somebody from Booker Bank is already on there, Chris Lassala. She's the treasurer. Rob Pastor, he's secretary. So I'm board chair, Callie is vice chair, and then, like we said, Chris Lassala treasurer, and then Rob Pastor is our secretary. And then who else? We have Kristy Anderson.
From Cobblestone.
Cobblestone, yep. We still have Leif Larson. We still have Lori Lyman. Who else do we have? Who am I missing?
Shannon Arnold, Erin Schaaf.
Shannon Arnold, yep, Erin Schaaf.
We have a few new members, Eric Coon.
Yes.
From Dressing, Florida. And Rob Davenport from Ascentsia. And then somebody-
Who are we missing? I know. That time's up.
Time's up.
It might take an hour.
All right. You guys are done.
Yeah, that's right. Get the time's up. Thank you very much.
Thanks, you guys.
But I'll leave you with one cool thing.
Okay.
In the rebuilding of the chamber, we don't want to assume anything on how people think about what their chamber should look like, what it should do. So we're working with the Minnesota Chamber of Congress to develop two surveys for us. One for those who are current members and withstanding, and then one for those who have been members in the past, but they kind of fell off somewhere over the last five years. And so we want to reach out to them and see what's going. Your input is also important to us. So if you have any types of feedback you'd like to give to the chamber, any input, we sure would appreciate it. I know a couple of you have stopped in the office already, and we were pretty excited we're going to rebuild. We're gonna come back. We're gonna come back stronger than ever.
Exactly.
And it's gonna be organic, it's gonna be grassroots, and we're gonna do it because of the people who are providing us the input. We can base our motivation and our actions forward on their input.
Um, we are also, there's five volunteers Monday through Friday from 11:00 to 1:00 that, so there is somebody there from the chamber at the office.
At the office, yeah.
Which helps, I think.
Just a, no, 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 no. It's just a suggestion that you might want to reach out to Laurel for the print, so that you can send her the board numbers.
Oh, yeah.
So that when she prints it in the newspaper, she would have.
That's great.
Oh, sure.
Assuming she does that, I'm not, I don't want to assume too much, but it'd give you an opportunity to introduce them.
Sure. Thank you. As soon as we leave here, we'll think of that 12th one.
It always works. You'll get down to the bottom of the stairs.
Well, yeah, we are.
It always works that way.
Okay.
You can do it. You've done great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience that would like to bring something forward that's not on the agenda? All right, we will go to new business. First item on, on the new business is to approve the 2021 annual audit as prepared by Schlender Winter. Ryan Schmidt, he met with us earlier. I don't see him online right now. However, city administrator, you want to just give us a quick update on the conversation that we had at the last meeting, our budget and finance earlier, on our clean rating?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Ryan Schmidt from Schlender Winter, they, his company performed the audit. He, like I said, gave us a clean audit. That's the best rating that we can get in this type of audit with government financials. I'd like to, you know, thank the city staff, the finance officer, working with the company. Things went very well. It was virtual again this year. They found no significant, significant findings this year, so therefore, you know, that's, that's a plus for us. Everything looks very well. Very comparable to last year's audit. Nothing made, no major changes. And that's what I have for today. I mean, but you were all there and-
Does anyone have anything to bring forward regarding the audit from our last meeting? All right, with that being said, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the 2021 annual audit.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have Kooch Ching Area Prevention and Education update. Beth Ann Slotinsky and Janessa Bolaski.
Good evening. My name is Beth Ann Slotinsky, and I work at ISD 361. I'm the community ed coordinator, along with, I oversee the PNI grant. Up until July of 2021, we had a planning and implementation grant. It was a prevention grant that focused, focused first on alcohol with our youth, sixth or 12th grade. In July of 2021, it expired, and we applied for a new one, and we received the new one at the end of October of 2021. The new grant that we have is called DFC, and it's a drug-free communities grant. We are special, we are focusing on alcohol, sixth or 12th grade, along with tobacco. More of a focus on vaping than traditional tobacco. At that, at this point in October, I took a supervisory role in the grant, so I oversee the grant and every, and we hired Janessa Bolaski.
Yeah, so I was hired in January to do a DFC coordinator position. My office is in the high school. What we are focusing on after I was hired and getting the grant is building our community collaboration. Beth and I just went to North Carolina to do a week-long training on community collaboration. That's kind of why we landed here, to talk to you guys and to get you about our grant. And we are establishing our youth group at the high school. So my office is in a room, but there's also a spot for youth to come and hang out. We like to call it like a safe room, where they can talk to me, hang out, do homework. We are rebuilding our coalition. We're rebranding, rebranding our coalition. We have a new logo that we have created with our youth, and we're trying to get new members involved. So if anyone wants to come for our meetings, they are monthly, the second Tuesday. Our next meeting is in August. And we've been doing a lot of community activities with our youth group. We have done like sandbagging the last three weeks of school. We went to Cary Park and cleaned up the park, and we had a lot of good conversations with our youth about what we found, like vaping-wise, cigarette-wise. And hopefully, that will be a conversation once we're back in September with you guys, about what we can do about signage and getting that.
So talking about signage, one of the conversations that we've had with youth is, we talked about Cary Park, and it's been an initiative for six years now, and we've cleaned it up and have come to you and talked to you about it. One thing that they had noticed is there's no signs that say no smoking. They've also noticed that at our parking lot in our school, they found a lot of traditional cigarette butts and vaping products. So we are gonna work with the school to get signage there, but we'd also like to kind of put it in your noggin's right now, that we are gonna come back and we're gonna request some signage going up at Cary Park. That's coming from the youth. We try to look through their eyes at these issues, and that was the one thing that they, they brought up, is that there's no signs here. So we will be coming back to request that at the city. One thing I just would really like to say too is that we met, she talked, we were in North Carolina last week, and we met with people from all over the United States. And one thing that Janessa even brought up is that we're really unique in this grant. We're housed at the high school. We have kids coming to us. We, we are boots on the ground, whereas a lot of these DFC grants are not housed in the school, they're housed through the health department. And we see a significant, we see the kids way more than the other grants do. And so they're looking at us like, how do you guys get kids? How do you reach them? How do you get them to take surveys? So I just want to say that, that, you know, we thank the school and the city because they are involved in giving us data and stuff to get this grant. And we're very unique, and it's, it's very exciting to know that we're kind of in the forefront of having us housed right in the school where the kids are.
Fantastic. Does anyone have any questions?
Wonderful. Anything working with the youth, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I have questions. Why, why are you guys rebranding?
Um, it was just something that we had talked about. The name is still gonna stay the same, but all of our other, so one of our logos was together, we are strong with, with the Broncos.
Right, yep.
And that, we're just going to a purple and gold color for our branding. When we talk to, when we do surveys with people from our community, adults, um, community members, and we do it with the kids, the Broncos is a theme that keeps coming through, and we just thought, let's, let's go. And we are, the grant is through the high school, through the, through the district. So we're just doing a more of a purple and gold theme.
And then my, my only other question that I had is the usage of Cary Park. I know that the, the youth that went over there and cleaned, like you said, six years ago, and now they've been over there helping with the sandbagging. Are, are the youth utilizing that facility outside of, you know, organized CAPE organizations? Because as I go by there, there's a lot of youth there, and I can see, at least at the, at the skate park, there is a ton of youth going there. And I have noticed myself with, with uses of tobacco and vaping as I go by.
So one of the things that comes out when we talk to kids is that they want to use Cary Park. It's in the center of our city. Tourists see it. And that was one thing that came out, is that when you don't have a driver's license, you still want to hang out with your friends. And we want kids to be outside. We want kids to not be in front of the TV or on their phones. We want them outside. And they actually, the 12, 13, 14, even 15-year-olds, they'll ride their bikes up there and hang out. So yes, they do, and they want to.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? I appreciate everything you guys are doing. And I have gotten emails from you guys on those meetings, and I know that I've, I've went to, out of town with some of this stuff. I just think over time, with the pandemic or whatever, I got out of it, and I didn't want to jump back in. But if, if that's a true invite, I would love to be a part of that.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
I'll take you up on it.
Thank you. All right, next, we have a, um, first reading of ordinance, Minnesota Energy Resources franchise renewal. As you guys see, you got an updated piece of literature from the city attorney. There is a piece that is highlighted that is going to be removed, and that was a recommendation from the city attorney, and it was accepted by the Minnesota Energy Resources. So with that being said, chair would entertain a motion to have the first reading of the contract ordinance. We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Any discussion? Betty, please.
It is a-
City administrator, sorry.
It is a franchise agreement. It's a 25-year agreement. This is a renewal, and I had asked the attorney to review it. I actually asked our engineers to review it as well, to make sure that, you know, working in our right of ways and all of those items were covered. Steve did notice this in talking with Paolo Sullivan, the Minnesota Energy representative. Talked to their attorneys. They understand that Public Utilities Commission, you know, takes care of some of the legal pieces of that anyway, so they were, they did not have an issue taking that out. So the next copy you will have before you at the next regular council will have that removed for the second reading.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. I'll vote yes. Passes five zero. Did you eat some of those peanuts?
No, the peanuts-
No, I had a porky.
Uh, next, we have a resolution for an application to conduct off-site gambling for the Rainier Recreation Club, to conduct a raffle to be held at Bacchus Community Center on August 5th, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion to adopt that resolution.
Submove.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a resolution, application for exempt permit for the Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, Ash River Trail to conduct a raffle, it to be held at Bacchus Community Center on August 20th, 2022. Chair would entertain a motion for that resolution.
Submove.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have purchase of a Hustler X160 commercial lawnmower from Forestland Sales and Service in the amount of $8,847.61. There was some information in your packet on why the purchase needs to be made by our public works supervisor. Chair would entertain a motion to conduct that purchase.
Ooh.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have a recommendation coming out of land use and legislation. This is for the first reading of a new contract ordinance for the Minnesota Uniform Fire Code. Chair would entertain a motion to move that forward. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion?
If I may, and the chief might chime in as well, but the reason some of this is laid out, obviously, we're, we've adopted the Minnesota Uniform Fire Code in the past, but we laid out a little more detail and a little more specifics on different recreational fires. Our police officers deal with that from time to time. This is a lot easier document for them to go directly to, to find out exactly the rules and regulations. And it lays out, there's a fee in the end. We did again have our city attorney review this, and he had, he was okay with all the information provided in this ordinance. And then with that, we would be putting together, kind of like a flyer ad, a piece of paper that we can hand out to people with recreational fires, and even have law enforcement have them available. So if they do go to a location, they can hand it out and say, here's some, you know, rules and regulations in regards to recreational fires within city limits.
Excellent. Chief, do you want to add anything?
Well, yes. The only thing I'd like to add is this is not to extend harder-handed rules to the public. This is more so to allow everybody the ability to enjoy a recreational fire at their home. Without, you know, part of this was under my discretion or a police officer's discretion. This lays it out a lot more easier, so everybody can have that in government and place those rules and regulations out. So it's not someone guessing on what's legal or not. One thing we did do is this is-
The longer you talk, the more I need you to come forward.
The benefit of this is we did copy the, um, City of Virginia laid this out very nicely. And when we did our review, it was not just the City of Virginia, it was the City of Hibbing, and the City of Bemidji had very similar language. So we're not reinventing wheel, we're making it easier for everybody to enjoy it. So that's what this is all about.
Councilor Kraus, get a question.
I just have one question, though. Paragraph C subdivision two, bullet D, the fire must be located on the owner's own property in a minimum of 25 feet from all property lines. That's pertinently impossible in town. We have 29 and a half-foot lots. Even if you have a double lot, it's only like 37 feet wide. Is that gonna be, is that something that's going to be enforced, or where are we at on that?
Yep.
So, okay. Cause I mean, our lot, it's- Cause I mean, our lot, it'd be impossible to be 25 feet from all lot lines, or lots are 29 and a half feet wide.
How deep are they?
Depth wouldn't matter because you'd still be from the, from your neighbor on either side of you, you wouldn't be 25 feet from them.
From all property lines, okay.
And if you read item F, it would be 25 feet from any structure, so on those narrow lots, you'd have... Oh yeah, you're not, it's impossible.
One question for you too on B, paragraph B, it talks about the storage of the flammable liquids and everything. An explosive blast, it may be continued in agricultural district. County's not agricultural district.
So where we run into this one specifically is, this is something that was in our last ordinance as well, but where we run into this is more so in the, when we have companies that come up and do blasting in PCA, for example, and storage of the explosives. So what they'll typically do is find a, not in the city, but they will find a rural area that's secure. And what they typically do is they have a bunker or a certified place to store those explosives.
Won't affect the county at all though?
No, not on that regard, but me being the fire chief in the area, I do oftentimes inspect those.
Yes, I know, even frequently. And so has the ATF and everybody else, so.
Yep.
Careful with that, okay. Thank you.
So I sat on the, on the land use and legislation and I said I was leery about this then, but now that I say here, what Councilor Kraus picked up, which I completely missed, it would basically ban fires in half the city.
Over half.
Over half the city.
You'd need more than a double lot.
And this isn't a change from the Minnesota Fire Code we had adopted before, we're just laying a few of these, highlighting a few of these items within this for enforcement purposes to make it easily, more easy to read, excuse me, and available to the public. Unfortunately, on some lots, no, legally you can't. It's for safety purposes of not being within a certain distance of buildings.
And if you read further, there are different things you can do. So that would be an open burning pit or an open three-foot fire ring or whatnot, but if you go to portable outdoor fireplaces, that reduces to 15 feet. So an outdoor fireplace with an approved chimney and stuff like that is different than an open fire ring. And then portable gas-fired heating appliances are different again. So again, it makes the, so that's five feet. So it's making sure the proper device is followed for the restrictions of the lot.
Well, and I think you just sold me again, city administrator. This is something we already have on the books. It's just something that we're cleaning up and making it easier for the residents to be able to read and understand. It's not like we're changing anything, we're just coming up with an easier-to-read understanding of the rules and regulations. Any other questions moving forward? Hearing none, we have a motion in a second, I'll call the question.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, even though I don't know if I like it. Thank you, chief. Next, we have public works recommendations. We have approve a bid from Adam McIntyre Painting for Light Pole Painting Project in the amount of $18,150. They were the only bid provided. Chair would entertain a motion to move that forward. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Bowler, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have Committee of the Whole recommendations. The first one would be to approve sending a budget request to Kooching County to help fund the International Falls ambulance service during 2023 while the county steering committee researches options to help the finance of the service. Chair would entertain a motion to approve that letter. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Kraus, do we have a second? Second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. Next, we have approve moving forward with the design and engineering of the water treatment plant, capital improvements plan, including applying for funding from Minnesota Rural Water Association. Chair would entertain a motion on that.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? City engineer, would you like to bring anything forward on that?
If you could, just if we have questions.
I think we got a whole lot of information. So, thank you. So we have a motion in a second, I'll call the question.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero.
Thanks, Jason.
Next, we have the revised aware program document as presented. This came up as well in our Committee of the Whole meeting. Chair would entertain a motion to move that forward. So move. We have a motion by Councilor Deitch, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion carries five zero. All right, that gets us down to any other business to come before the council? Hearing none, we'll go to the reports of the administrator.
I have nothing additional this evening, mayor, thank you.
Okay. City attorney and department heads? Nothing. All right, we'll go to your packet, you did have updated fire rescue EMS monthly report for May. We'll go to reports of the mayor, council committees, boards and commissions. Anybody have any of them?
Mr. Mayor, please. I just want to say, last week we had a meeting with representatives from Senator Smith's office and to talk about housing and it was a pretty well-attended event and I think it really opened the eyes, their eyes, to just see what sorts of challenges we have for housing, not only in the county, but specifically in International Falls, talking about wetlands and other things. So it was a really, it was a really good meeting.
Fantastic. Any other updates? I have two things first. We need to, I'm going to call for a special budget and finance meeting next Monday. The city administrator and I had an opportunity to talk this afternoon. We have received and closed out our city attorney, RFP, and we do have some information for the council. Two firms have gotten back with us and the council, we would like to present that to the council of the two firms and see how we would want to move forward. City administrator, what time did we discuss, was it?
Four o'clock and open, whatever.
It shouldn't be too long, right? It should be a really, really quick meeting, maybe not 15 minutes like Councilor Kraus' council meetings. So four o'clock on Monday, just to go through that, so we see what options we have moving forward. And the second one that I have is the Fourth of July commission meetings. We've been meeting for almost a full month now. We have a great group of people that has came on. We have changed a lot of the things that we've done historically for the Fourth of July by keep, but also keeping everything the same, only slightly different. There will be some changes to the parade, one simple one. Historically, the kids' parade has started at 12:30 and then the main parade has been at one. The kids' parade will be included into the main parade this year, so there isn't a half hour lull between the kids going down Main Street and then having the main parade. The second one, I am very, very happy to announce that on the Third of July, we have Bill Pikarski will be opening up at seven o'clock for down in the band shell. And our main band that evening will be starting at nine o'clock and that is Bad Habits Brass, which is a five-piece brass band playing swing and upbeat music all night long. We are moving the beer gardens, which will be supplied this year by Rotary as they have in the past. The beer gardens will be on the north side of the band shell, allowing the band shell to be used for its intended purpose of music. We will be setting up the park very similar to the Labor Day picnic, which Councilor Kraus has helped out so much, or I'm sorry, Councilor Holden has, I had a concussion a couple of weeks ago, I'm missing some stuff, I apologize.
Hey, don't worry about it.
But which Councilor Holden has helped out with, we're going to be putting picnic tables around the park itself. Historically, where we've had the train, so people will be able to access the music there, there will be a dancing area right there. It should be an amazing evening for the vendors, for people in our community, just come back and be together again. On the south side of the road there, we are going to be having kids' activities. Our police department is putting together an obstacle course, we've been working with Lois Lundine at Bacchus. She has a lot of kids' activities that are being put into this year's event. So food vendors and mingling on the north side of the road, south side of the road will have craft vendors and kids' activities. And we're very happy to announce that we did come up last week with our grand marshals of this year's parade and it will be the pastor family, Rob, Andrea and their children. The last piece of it is, we're going to extend the Fourth of July, the second, third and fourth, and on the second, we'll have vendors in the park. We will also be having some karaoke in the park in the band shell, followed by the movie National Treasure, which is free to the community, just sit down, bring your lawn chair and watch the movie. Beer gardens will also be available that evening, so it should be a great weekend here in International Falls. And from what I've heard, the conversations are with the flooding that's going on at the lake, there's not a lot of people that plan on utilizing this lake this year. We do think we're going to have a lot of people in town. We also think we have a lot of people that are coming up to International Falls this year for the Fourth of July. So it's, I have so much happiness on how this committee has worked out this year and just what they've been able to do to get us to where we're at. So that is the only thing I have an update on from the Fourth of July. We do have, our next meeting is a week from tomorrow and then literally the morning of the Fourth is our last one. So if anybody wants to get any information on the Fourth of July, you can contact the city, you can go to the city's Facebook page, which has all of our information on it. We're still looking for vendors, we're still looking for people in the parade. We're at audience, there's any, please.
How is, how are we advertising this, Fourth of July? Is it going down on the range to the papers or to anybody down there that wants to advertise on it because it spends much time, it'd be a good thing because maybe you can get these hotels filled.
We have not, we have not advertised outside of International Falls at this point. We've been doing social media, flyers have not been printed as of yet. With that being said, the reason for it is there has been so much change this year and trying to get people to commit this year since last year, let's all admit, was a down year for the Fourth of July coming right out of the pandemic. So we have not advertised. However, if this is what we expect it to be this year and we do bring it back and it is an amazing event like it's really shaping up to be, that really does open up the plan for next year to try to fill the hotels and getting some of these people to sign up earlier rather than later to commit to, you know, northern Minnesota for Fourth of July. But great, great question. Any other questions? All right, we'll go on to audience. Anybody on the audience that has anything to bring forward? In correspondence, we have Kooching County Board of Directors minutes from June 7th. We have public library meeting minutes from June 8th. And we also have the International Falls Recreation Commission minutes from June 8th. Our city offices will be closed on Monday, July 4th, for the Fourth of July. Our next regular city council meeting is Tuesday, July 5th at 5:30. With nothing else before us, we will adjourn.